Ten more Planning Commission. The first item on the agenda is citizen comment. Any citizen wishing to render comment, please step to the podium on your right. State your name, your address. Please let me your comment to three minutes. Any takers? We have a taker.
We have the only one, right?
Yes. It's a very short list.
Well, I guess I have a couple of questions. Is number one is what is...
Excuse me. State your name.
Oh, my name. Yeah, Mohamed Swaya.
Thank you, and your address.
15022, Wanita Drive Northeast.
Very good.
Kenmore, 98028.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Well, I'm just trying to understand the reason there's this replanning. About seven years ago, I was looking for some, talked to the city about maybe develop my property, and then they were not interested in any rezoning whatsoever. And now, seven years later, I guess, is it because of the growth in the whole area you feel like you have to do, what other cities are doing for density and so forth, or just...
We'll let the staff speak to that when you're done with your comment. Do you have more to add?
And the other thing I wanted to ask that I noticed that you guys want to raise the density to 24 dwellings per acre. And I came to Monah, there's some areas in West Seattle, they're doing apartments as small as 200 square feet. Is that something that could happen in Kenmore? And when that happens, how can you do that without, you know, will you require still parking to go along with that? Or will you just consider it an urban area where people don't need as much parking, just you want to accommodate the number of people looking for apartments? And maybe hope that you will work on the traffic with Metro so that there is, you know, good access to the city from here, without people having to drive and cause more congestion, because we do have a problem with that. That's it.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Anybody else care to render citizen comment during this portion of the agenda? Okay, that closes the citizen comment period for the meeting tonight. The next item on the agenda is approval of the July 25, 2017 Planning Commission meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve or amend? Actually, I do have a motion to amend. If I may. Uh, let's see. Citizen comment from last meeting. Third paragraph, page two. It reads, Wu San, quote, "Billy," representing Rockies Corner located at 15012 Wanita Drive Northeast, Kenmore, was permitted to speak again. His reason for speaking was because three years ago, he endured a year-long code enforcement case against him for ditch cleaning on what the city considered was a wetlands area. He fears that the city of Kenmore is going to, quote, "screw them again," and doesn't see a benefit. He was asked by Chair Nugent not to speak again because he was restating his original comments. There's a little more to the story. So I want to propose that we revise it as follows. After the first line and the address, instead of "was permitted to speak again," revise to say "asked to speak again." And then afterward, insert "Chair Nugent granted Mr. Son's request." And then before the last sentence, insert "Mr. Son then began to repeat points he made previously." Period. "Chair Nugent pointed this out." Period. "Mr. Son directed an obscenity toward Chair Nugent." Period. "Chair Nugent terminated Mr. Son's second opportunity to speak." Period. And then replace the last line. Do I hear a second? Okay, any discussion?
Do you mind just sort of reading it from the top?
The revised version?
Yeah.
Not at all. Wu San, quote, "Billy," representing Rockies Corner located at 15012 Wanita Drive Northeast, Kenmore, Washington, 98028, asked to speak again. "Chair Nugent granted Mr. Son's request. His reason for speaking was because three years ago, he endured a year-long code enforcement case against him for ditch cleaning on what the city considered a wetlands area. He has fears that the city of Kenmore is going to, quote, 'screw them again,' and doesn't see a benefit. Mr. Son then began to repeat points he had made previously. Chair Nugent pointed this out. Mr. Son directed an obscenity toward Chair Nugent. Chair Nugent then terminated Mr. Son's second opportunity to speak." He was, end of paragraph. Any other discussion? Questions? No? Okay. All in favor of the motion to revise, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Any abstentions? There being none. All right. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as amended? Thank you, Commissioner. Do I hear a second? Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Any abstentions? There being none. The motion carries. The minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is Neighborhood Business Zone Review Continued. I invite the staff to the presentation table.
Good evening, Planning Commission. So this is a follow-up to your last meeting where you held the public hearing, closed the public hearing, and began your discussion. And I believe you got through most of the recommendations, and there was one issue that was outstanding, which is why we're here this evening to discuss. And what you were really looking for was in the South Neighborhood Business Zone was how multifamily development would be allowed. And so I'm going to ask Lori to speak to this, and she has provided you two possible approaches. So I'll ask Lori to outline those, and then after that, if the Commissioner has any questions, we'd be happy to answer those. And then opportunity for you to discuss and then give direction.
Thank you. Before we do that, could we respond to the questions that the first commenting person made tonight?
Yes. Good evening. I would be happy to do that. So the first question was, what was the reason for the re-planning of the area? And we've talked about this in the past, but the Neighborhood Business Zone is the last holdover commercial zoning district from King County. So the city of Kenmore has never really looked at that zoning district. And so the point of this review was to take it up, and then all of the commercial areas in the city will have been reviewed by the Kenmore Planning Commission and Kenmore City Council, rather than just continuing regulations that were put in place at incorporation. So that's the reason for looking at it this time around. It didn't really have anything to do with the need to provide additional density for growth. Again, it was just a chance to revisit an area that Kenmore hasn't put its stamp on. That's the best way to phrase it. If he had raised the question of would very small apartments be possible? So the way the city's rules work currently, if you wanted to do in the recommendation apartments in that zone, it would have to be part of a mixed-use project. And those apartments are not regulated by size, other than that there's a minimum size by the building code for residential units. And I can pull out my code, and we can talk about that size if you want to do that. That was, those were some code amendments that were made a few years ago. But you cannot achieve a greater density. So regardless of whether the units are 200 square feet or 2,000 square feet, you can only put a certain number of units on the property. The regulation is by density, not by size of units. And then lastly, the question was raised in Seattle, sometimes they are allowing new apartment development without the provision of parking, because Seattle is quite an urban area. The city of Kenmore has no areas where you don't have to provide parking if you're doing multifamily. And that would be the same with these areas for multifamily. So you would have to provide parking for your development.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else want to comment on this? Okay. All right. Debbie, back to the subject for tonight, or Lori?
So in your staff memo, which is very brief, I had provided some background information. And then on the second page were the two approaches. As you recall, Commissioner Vanderland had made a motion accepting the staff recommendation. That motion was seconded, and then the motion was tabled to this evening. And there was some discussion about an interest in making sure that the area, like the other Neighborhood Business area, was preserved primarily for commercial development, small commercial development. So that raised the question of whether, in fact, there should be a requirement, as there is in your recommendation for the north area, that you can't do standalone townhomes, for example, standalone residential. So the way it works currently in the south area is that you can do either apartments in mixed use, or you can do a development that's a townhome development. So you could not do any commercial and do a standalone townhome development. So hearing those two ideas, I had two approaches, and they're on page two of the memo. One approach would be to say, if you really did not want to eliminate the opportunity for commercial, you could say that multifamily development should only be permitted as part of mixed use. That's the same standard as in the north Neighborhood Business Zone that you just made your final recommendation on last time. Staff recommends that the base density would be eight dwelling units per acre, and that you could go to 24 dwelling units per acre and provide the affordable housing that we've been talking about. The second approach would be to say you can do either of those things, as it is in the recommendation now. You can either do mixed use, or you can do the townhomes. The base density, again, would be eight dwelling units per acre. The project could go to 18 dwelling units per acre with mixed use. That would be an incentive for someone to do mixed use rather than townhomes. Or the project could go to 24 dwelling units per acre if you were doing both mixed use and the provision of affordable housing. But concern was, from staff's perspective, that the difference between 18 dwelling units per acre and 24 dwelling units per acre is pretty small. And we're losing all of our, they're getting, the property owner is getting an increase in density from eight to 24 potentially. If you make the calculation from 18 units per acre, you've already sort of given away from eight to 18 units per acre in terms of the affordable housing benefit. So staff is recommending that you would still use eight dwelling units per acre as the base, even if you went to 18 with mixed use. So that's the staff recommendation. And I think you were still having some discussion about that.
Thank you. Anybody care to comment? Commissioner Olson?
Trying the approach a little bit that we did on the north side, does it, what problems do you see of staging it so that we would have a new base of 12 units per acre rather than the eight in Approach One?
Well, I don't think there's technically any, there's no problem with it. You're then giving away the increased density from eight to 12.
Yes.
So whether you want some compensation back for affordable housing with that increase, that's the fundamental question.
What I'm trying to do is give more flexibility to the owners and sharing in the fact that we're looking at building on it, so you don't get as much benefit for the affordable housing as you would under the Approach One that you've got. But it also gives something to the developer, so he could pick. Otherwise, he doesn't have an option. It's either, I'm trying to give more flexibility to the owner. That's sort of where I'm at.
Anybody else?
I want to understand your recommendation, the second recommendation. Excuse me. And it was to, we currently have a base of eight dwelling units per acre, and you were proposing that we allow for up to 18 dwelling units per acre if the owner put in mixed use, commercial uses. Or up to 24 units, residential units, per acre, but with a base of eight. So that there would be 16 potential new units without mixed use? And that the ratio would be one to four affordable units for the additional 16?
Well, you could only go to 24 if you did affordable housing and mixed use.
Okay. That's what I'm getting at. But then you said that you would make the base eight.
Correct. So for example, if someone were going to build, go to the maximum, and we're going to build 24 dwelling units per acre, and you had a one-acre site, for example, so, which none of them are that big. But hypothetically, for purposes of discussion. So instead of, so at 24 dwelling units per acre, you would have, as you mentioned, achieved an additional 16 units. One out of four would have to be affordable units. So you would be required to provide four affordable units at 24 dwelling units per acre in mixed use. If you were to do that same calculation, going from 18, which mimics more what we did in the north, where you did your calculation based off the mixed use opportunity, then you would be looking at the difference between 18 and 24. So six times one and four, what is that, one and a half, I think.
Yeah. So they build one, and they'd have fee and loo for the other half.
Right, correct.
Comment? Commissioner McDonald?
So the only way they could put, ignore putting up a commercial is if they let it, were restricted to eight units per acre. On the top one, right?
Approach Two.
Approach Two?
Right. And in the top one, you can only do multifamily if you do it in mixed use. Approach Two, you can do either. You can do mixed use, or you can do townhomes. But if you choose to do townhomes, you're limited to eight dwelling units per acre.
And just to comment on it, I kind of like Approach Two better because it gives more flexibility to the owner and an incentive to get commercial space. But if it, commercial space just doesn't, isn't in the cards, then, you know, put residential in there. I mean, that's...
Well, under the staff's second proposal, I don't think that happens. You have to have mixed use, correct?
No.
To go beyond eight.
To go beyond eight.
Go beyond eight.
You do.
Right, yeah.
Correct.
And in Approach One, it's mandatory for mixed use at all levels. So I'm kind of leaning towards Approach Two.
Okay. Commissioner Baker?
So could I ask, in the mandatory approach, the motivation for doing that is to try to keep commercial spaces there and not convert it totally to residential, correct?
So if you're talking about the mandatory requirement that it be mixed use...
Oh, no, there still would be, there still would be commercial then, right?
Right. In Approach One, you would pretty much mandate that every parcel had to have some commercial on it.
Some commercial.
Correct. Because standalone multifamily would not be permitted. So it would retain, it is the strongest option in terms of retaining commercial space. The second option that is, makes doing solely a residential project, there's a disincentive to that, because you can't get nearly the density you can if you would do mixed use. So mixed use is an incentive in the second approach, because you can get higher densities if you do mixed use.
So here's my concern with the second approach. And I think we touched on this last week. Commissioner Mulcair raised a point that gave this, shed a different light on this, which was very helpful. And it led to us realizing, you know, if we have a mixed use requirement, it's a big disincentive for an owner to build, because it's, as evidenced by mixed use projects in this, near this area. Those mixed use spaces don't get leased quickly, if at all. And the example that I gave was the apartment mixed use project on Lake City Way. It's about at 140th. I've been by it a couple of times since the last meeting. It's called Array. At least the apartments are. They do have one, after about four years. They do have one commercial tenant, but that's it. And that's Lake City Way. And there are other mixed use projects on Lake City Way that do fill up that lowest space. So clearly, you get, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say that one factor that's different in Kenmore than in other places is that mixed use development doesn't mean it has to be in the same building.
Yeah.
So if you do, and in fact, there's an example on northeast 181st Street, where there are apartments, condos, I'm not sure what they are, on the south side of the property. But on the north side of the property, it's like standalone, standalone commercial, I think. It's possible that there's an apartment up above. But anyway, you don't have to do it in the same building.
Yeah.
So for example, if, as long as your development is integrated design-wise, so it was done thoughtfully and together, you could have, for example, a standalone retail or office space and have residential on another portion of the property. So that's very different from the other models. I just point that out as a...
Yeah. But, you know, and we, it did come up last week, and I said, you know, I don't recall seeing that kind of a construction, a mixed use project where they segregated structures. And if we have small parcels, that is a really inefficient use of space. So I don't think that's going to be the carrot that makes the difference for us. So that's my concern with Two, is that you not only have the disincentive of having to build commercial space, which likely won't get leased anytime soon, and you lose money that way, then you have to set aside the one to four ratio of affordable housing units, where you're going to lose money too. So I think number two are two disincentives to anything getting built, or at least beyond eight units of multifamily.
Right. So let me clarify that actually Approach One is the only one that requires you to do mixed use.
Right.
Approach Two allows you to do multifamily without commercial. So I see your point that, you know, if you want to go to the higher densities, you have to do mixed use. But you could do just multifamily at the lower density.
Right, at eight.
So, right. So it may be that what you're suggesting is that if you wanted to do standalone multifamily, the density should be higher. I'm not sure, but...
Right. You know, I think this all came about partly as a response to Arthur's, what did he call it, editorial? And then Lori, you picked up on that editorial. If we want density, then we should mandate affordable housing, so that they have to set aside the affordable housing to build that density. I think that was his point about one of the other arch cities, that it's good to mandate it, because what you really want is density anyway. And that didn't really sit right with me, because they're not going to build it if they don't have enough profit from the non-affordable housings to justify the loss they take on the affordable housing set-asides. And you have to be in a very, you have to be in a job center. I mean, the pattern so far has been that the cities with a lot of job growth, with bigger economies, Seattle, Bellevue, Redmond, probably Kirkland, have the luxury, because there are so many jobs nearby, that developers are willing to lose money on the set-aside affordable housings. But we haven't, I haven't seen that in smaller economies, and we've got the smallest of any arch city. So my thought is, you know, if you want affordable housing, don't have a mixed use disincentive on top of it. You can go one of two ways. You could do number one, which means you can go way up in density if you have mixed use, because then it might be profitable enough with all that extra density to justify the losses from not leasing the ground floor. That keeps the businesses in that area. Or you could have no mixed use requirement, but an affordable housing set-aside. And that, the losses from the affordable housing set-aside are more than offset, hopefully, by the additional density and all the other profitable units that you have either renting or selling. So I think one or the other would work in that area. I don't think putting them both in the same zoning requirement for the extra density is going to work. There's just two big disincent, two disincentives that will discourage anything from happening.
I agree. I think that's a good point. My concern with Approach One and Approach Two to a lesser degree is that we're, and I understand why, but we're making an effort to try to incentivize or retain commercial businesses, where history has not demonstrated that commercial use of the south property that we've been discussing is particularly attractive to business owners, right? Take, for example, the martial arts studio that's now sat vacant for probably five years. That's definitely an underutilized, and I don't know all the details why it hasn't been developed, and I understand it's got plans for a restaurant. Do you know the one I'm speaking about?
Yep.
That's been an underutilized piece of commercial property for the 18 years I've lived here. For short stints of time, there have been ongoing businesses, but nothing for sustain.
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 Right.
So if the market economy has not demonstrated a strong commercial use bias for that area, I'm not sure we need to go to very extreme measures. I'm not sure incentivizing it with density is going to make the difference. If we haven't demonstrated that people are going to come and shop there, or take services there, or eat lunch there, then building a density structure around that idea may not be the right thing to do. So I like where you were heading with, if we want to incentivize multi-use with some affordable housing offset, that seems reasonable, but to combine them both seems like we may not end up achieving either.
Yeah, I agree with that. Thanks. I think we have to ask, and I remember Commissioner McDonald, who lives near there, and he said something about how important it was to preserve small businesses there, because otherwise, for example, having a neighborhood grocery means you don't have to drive all the way to QFC. But I was thinking, that's not that far. You know, if you live near that corner, as you do, that's not a, that's not a big long trek to get to QFC and the other shopping, commercial area that's in Kirkland on top of the hill.
And that's not a bad observation, but I can tell you that if you want to go somewhere quick to get something, going to Rockies is the best. And they, they're pretty busy there. I mean, it's not...
I'm not against it.
Yeah, I mean...
Is there a market, is there room for a second Rockies?
I...
I don't, I don't know. But I do know that they're, on the restaurant, they're working on it right now, actually.
Yeah.
They were, I saw that. But, and your first, I understand that it gets too complicated, developer's going to go, you know, I'll pass on it. So I could see doing your first alternative, where you give them the density as long as they got it mixed use. I could sign off on that, but I...
You still really want to keep the business there?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's going to be important, because, you know, we're going to want to be able to have some close-in services. I mean, to drive down to Kenmore is, sometimes takes you 20 minutes.
Yeah, with bad traffic.
And even going to QFC, unless you go around in the neighborhoods, it can be, in rush hour, not an easy task.
And that's why I brought up your point, because from a distance, it doesn't look like a burden. But, you know, you got no business down there. And the businesses that are nearby are in Kirkland. And it may be that over time, you know, the increase in growth in that area may make the demand for a nearby business even greater. make the demand for a nearby business even greater. So, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not really on one side or the other. I just want, I think at the root of where we're going, you know, what Commissioner Mulcair is saying, and what I propose, and what you're kind of saying is, to what lengths do we want to go to keep the zoning directed toward keeping businesses at some level, at a mixed use level, instead of abandoning that in favor of an affordable housing incentive and complete, and the option for a complete multifamily development?
Yeah. Just a couple of comments.
Yeah.
In Kirkland, the mixed use is, does very well.
Yeah.
It's, it's, in fact, I don't, I haven't seen many vacant spots with that situation. This is not Kirkland, downtown Kirkland though, but, and they're doing it in Juanita too.
Yeah.
So, I think that's, that's something to consider and, and, you know, I just, I just think it's, it's important to have some commercial space. And if it doesn't work in a couple of years, we could revisit it.
Yeah.
I, I mean, we're not, we're not saying, if it doesn't work, it's not like it's, it's a fait accompli, so.
Yeah. Thank you. Commissioner Baker?
So, if we handed up some recommendations, a configuration of one or two, or, you know, massaging them so that they meet that need for commercial neighborhood business and provide housing, because the one other thing that you keep saying about these parcels is that it's a smaller total square footage than our north business zone, and the individual parcels are smaller as well, correct? So, you know, just the logistics of actually building any of this, would it have to be that you would cobble these businesses or the different parcels together to create what we're envisioning?
So, the total acreage in the north area is 1.8 acres. That's all of the parcels. There are four of them. In the south area, it's 1.46 acres over five parcels. So, they're fairly comparable in size, but the individual parcels, we're talking, if you, if you were to allow, for example, if you kept the base at eight and went up to 24, we're talking from four to seven units on individual parcels unless they joined together. So, all told, if every parcel redeveloped, you could get 23 units. So, it's not a huge-
Yeah.
...number of units between, even if you go to 24.
Yeah.
Commissioner Veenel.
Thirty-four. I'm sorry.
This may not be a connected set of thoughts, but I have the same concerns that Mike and I think some others talked about. At least today, mixed use is just not something that's likely to be viable on that location. I'm not saying elsewhere in, you know, in surrounding cities, it is viable. Looking out 20 years from now, that could be real different. But today, what we're trying to do is do something today that's going to incent some change or difference down there. Allowing mixed use isn't going to do anything there. 20 years from now, maybe that'll be different. But what I keep, coming back to my own mind too, is we really are trying, we have three, three supposed priorities here, and they don't really seem to be, given the size of the parcels, the reality of that situation, the reality of the economy, they don't really seem to be compatible. So, that leads to a choice. So, what's our primary goal here? Do we want to see multifamily there? Do we want to see mixed use? I take that back. Do we want to see multifamily? Do we want to see commercial development? Or do we want to allow some incentive for affordable housing? We could probably accomplish two out of the three, but I don't see how you can do all three and think that's going to really have any, motivate any kind of change. So, when I go through that logic trail for my own stuff, I hate the idea of giving up the, the owner or the developer is going, is going to achieve an economic advantage based upon whatever we do. So, it seems fair that given the city has needs to, the city and the rest of the citizenship are going to have to live with whatever happens. There ought to get some value out of that. Affordable housing seems to be the way we were looking at it. I still have a motion on the table that was tabled, where we're thinking, well, maybe we ought to think wider on that. And I s- But I'm still interested in that, particularly when you think about a small parcel like this. What are we really going to get out of there in terms of affordable housing?
Three, three to four units.
Three to four units. What does, what does difference, does that make when we've already got a, a district down here, and a transit district, that's going to provide many, many multiple times that? Is that really something we need to bend over backwards to do in this small parcel, which is surrounded by residential neighborhood already? What do we really want? So, my answer to that question is that I think what we want there is we want residential development, and we would like to see some kind of mixed use, some sort of residential, some sort of commercial option in there. That's what's compatible potentially, and I think even long-term with the neighborhood. Rather than giving up all of the value that would be a windfall to the property owner and the developer, why don't we take that money instead of, as part of affordable housing, which isn't going to be that much, and take it as a, in lieu cash? It could be used to support parks or other amenities within, within the city. So, that's, I don't have a motion there. I'm prepared to take my existing motion off the table so we can consider something else. But that's, that's my logic on this.
But let, let me, is, very often the case. You are very helpful. You get me thinking. You're outside the box. I just dig that. And now I'm thinking, I hadn't even thought about a fee in lieu, but you're thinking maybe that's the offset. Instead of having an affordable housing requirement, you have increased residential zoning and a fee in lieu requirement? And no mixed use requirement? Is, is just one of many possibilities?
I could go either way on the mixed use.
Yeah.
I could see allowing that as a developer could come in. It's almost in terms of what do you, what likely to happen? What are we likely to incent within the next few years of whatever we do here today? I think that begs for, and the more flexibility, which I think is a good thing you give them, the more you're likely to see something that's going to go for whether it is the economic advantage today.
Yeah.
That's not going to be mixed use.
Right.
It's going to be residential. So, I'm thinking, the more I think about this, I think obviously, or in my, my view of things, residential is the first primary use for that, for that neighborhood and for that parcel there. So, the question is, do we want to include a mixed use and we want to include some value back to the city for that? Like, you can get the, you can handle the value equation by moving away from, it can only be affordable housing. What, what could be something else?
Yeah. Although the fee in lieu would be commensurate to the affordable housing unless you had a different formula. And that only, that's the same disincentive, whether it's cash or the cost of building something that doesn't yield the market return on investment. The whole point of the fee in lieu is to make them commensurate. So, I don't, I'm not sure, just because it's cash, that's going to be, be, be more attractive than the affordable housing set-aside.
Well, I wonder, if you're a developer, and I'm not a developer, but I've always a developer, and I'm looking at that parcel and saying, I could develop 24 units or 18 units. And what kind of units am I going to develop there? Well, I'm going to have to, yeah, I'm going to have to do affordable housing, which means I really am going to lose any kind of economic value of whatever goes into affordable housing. But if I did a cash, I could have all 24 units be at a economic resale value that would be much higher, and that might make that in lieu payment look much more attractive than providing affordable housing, which would be there forever. You could amortize the value of that in lieu payment over, you know, the 20, 40-year life of the property. I think it would probably look much more advantageous than losing that revenue for whatever goes affordable housing is going to be forever.
Go ahead, Laurie.
So, I had just a couple of comments. First is procedural. I'm not sure, but if what you all are discussing is that you want this to be a residential rather than a commercial area, I don't know whether you're just saying allow standalone multifamily, or you're saying it should be just multifamily. If, if that's the direction you're headed, we would have to go back through the public process. That is so far outside what has been discussed by the planning commission to date that we would have to reinvigorate the public process. So, that was one comment. And then the second comment was, I've heard a couple of times that somehow the developer of this affordable housing is suffering a punishment, punishment, that's in quotes, for, have, because they have to do the affordable housing component. But in reality, the message that was, that we were trying to communicate is that they're getting a present. They're getting a greatly increased density, and, and so the, the numbers were chosen specifically to offset, here's the present, and we're not going to take back any more than we've already given you. I mean, that was the intent. So, it's not that we're trying to make it difficult for somebody to do affordable housing. We're assuming that it's a wash in terms of what they've been given and what they're giving back.
Right. I, I just want to make clear, I, I get that. It's all relevant. It's what you said. Compared to the current zoning, there is an incentive with the proposal with the affordable housing set-aside, set-aside to build more units. You're going to make more money with the new zoning up to 24 and a one to four ratio with a base of eight. It's a more attractive economic proposition than what it is now. I agree with that. The question is, is it attractive enough? Will it generate, you know, an investment? Hard to say. But what clearly would happen is if you didn't have the set-aside and you increase density up to 24 units per acre, that would be a much bigger incentive for somebody to go and do something. So, it's, depends on what you're comparing. If you're comparing the affordable housing requirement or option to increase in density without it, it's, it's not a penalty, it's just a, it's just a disincentive. If you're just looking at the affordable housing option with the increase in density to what we have now, yeah, it's a, it's a more attractive investment. So, we, it's hard to say, at what point do we, is, at what point does a buyer or developer look at this and say, yeah, this is a good investment compared to everything else I could do in this area? I don't know. Carol.
I think the other thing that we touched upon when we met last time is we also really do not have a handle on how much affordable housing do we presently have? And in our housing strategy, what is our goal? I mean, we've spent, you know, many months talking about affordable housing, gathering information about what a successful affordable housing project looks like. We had our, our symposium with Arch coming in and giving us a couple, I think, three different success stories. But we don't really have a way to compare those success stories with the potential in our city, you know? And you could do it a number of different ways, but if you start looking at the cities that those success stories took place in, they are huge cities compared to Kenmore. And the other question that I keep coming back to, you know, we want to do our part in providing affordable housing. And like Doug, Chairman Nugent, has mentioned, you know, what's going to really make it affordable is just to have some in this area because of our proximity. And so, that is the hard part about making this recommendation, is if the city council zones it a certain way, but there's no market response to set-asides for affordable housing, or it's not a punishment to the developer or the landowner. We, we see it's an incentive, but would it be more of a, of an incentive just to have more housing units?
Thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner. It makes me wonder, although we do have to get back to the procedural point that-
Yes.
Laurie Anderson raised about how we can't go completely residential without having another public hearing. Thank you for that point. But is there another area that's comparably zoned with 20, like 24 units per acre with density? Because that might be our best example of how the market's responding to that incentive.
Well, you know, the only other comparable commercial zone is probably community business, which is what you adopted for the north. And that actually goes up to 36 dwelling units per acre. It doesn't stop at 24. And yes, there definitely is development going on there.
Is it mixed use?
No. Well, one part, one project is mixed use, one is not mixed use.
Where is it?
So, the mixed use project is, I don't know that I can tell you the exact address. It's the one, I think they're blue, the apartments look out over the lake. It's right next to the travel.
It's on 181st.
Right. But it's, the apartments are above where the-
Commercial is.
The travel place is. And then the commercial is on the 181st side.
That's the point you were making about separate structures.
Right, right. And then the, the other development is a townhome development, and it doesn't have any mixed use.
And it's, what's the density on that?
I, I don't know. I could-
And where is it?
It's at the, it used to be a sort of a vacant lot. It's kitty corner from like the Benzach dentist, dental office.
On 181st?
Yeah. It's going in right now.
And 62nd or?
It's going in right now. 61st or 62nd.
Okay, I kind of think I know what you're, what you're talking about.
Yeah. If you went up from Polyachi's, if you turned left at Polyachi's off five to two and went up a block, it's just at the northwest corner.
Going east, turn left.
If, you're right. If you're going east, you take a left.
And then turn north.
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
Did I see a hand up over here? Commissioner Olson?
Somewhere in this discussion, we used to have a, there was a comment made, what happens if you minimize the amount of units that you want to build, but you make a million-dollar units? And therefore, you only got X units, but nothing else. And so, that's part of my priority in thinking, that we really need to maintain some commercial or retail-type function. Otherwise, that's where it could go. They may not be looking for maximizing the number of units if they go to a higher quality.
But that could be true now. It's zoned for F to eight units per acre, so it begs the question, why isn't it already happened?
Well, maybe it shouldn't be eight. Maybe it should be 12 or something else.
Right. But you could have eight million-dollar units, I suppose.
Well, it's eight, it's eight due place.
You know, the, the location probably doesn't justify the million unless you put gold everywhere or something inside it. I don't know what it would take.
I mean, to interrupt you, Commissioner.
Yeah, go ahead.
I would venture a guess, the reason it hasn't happened, because if you look across the way behind where the, where the judo studio used to be, they actually did that. There was a, there was a collection of-
Townhomes.
Townhomes, right, that came in there.
To the east.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I would imagine, I wouldn't be surprised if we had parcels that were amenable to that type of building, which these aren't, both in size and just the configuration of them, the hazard, toxic hazard. You probably would see that sort of development going up in there. It's, it's probably a prime location for that. As long as I'm speaking.
Yeah.
My intention is not to suggest that the area be totally residential, so please be res, feel better about that. The essence of the point I was trying to make before is, we have three potential uses that we're all trying to reconcile for this area. I'm not sure that we can do all three in the same package. So, the question in my mind is, what are our priorities? If you had to choose between residential, affordable housing, or some in lieu of, and mixed use, what do we want specifically in that area?
Yeah.
And what's our, just extrapolating that out, so what is that likely to incent happening to change now? How might that look different in the future? None of us can predict that. You're right, none of us here is knowing what a developer would probably respond to these incentives. But maybe we ought to go back to the same rule we've kind of adopted every other time we've got into this mix, which is say, let's, let's have as much flexibility, let's not try to create constraint that it's just going to have unintended consequences down the road. But I think we do have to decide what do we want, make a choice here. What are we trying to do here?
Yeah.
Can I comment?
Yeah, please, Commissioner.
I think we want, I mean, from my point of view, and I think it's well-known that I want to have commercial there, and I, and I get that too many stuff in the soup makes it not so good and leave off the affordable housing. But if you were to just increase the residential density, they'd be pulling a permit tomorrow. But if you were to just increase the residential density, they'd be pulling a permit tomorrow to, you know, because residential is going crazy, and we know that they'd love to put a big apartment there, and then with no services around, and people have to walk up, a lot of these people that will get in those apartments, a lot of them walk to the stores, too. I mean, I've seen them going from across the bridge, a lot of times with bags of groceries. So, I mean, I would really like to see, you know, even if it doesn't work, then we can come back to it. I mean, we're not, if we let the cat out of the bag, and then we get this big apartment there, and nothing else, I just don't, it doesn't
You can't undo that.
Yeah, and it's just, in my, in my mind's eye, I just don't see that for that property.
You know, the thing that occurred to me, too, is we're likely to see a lot of changes in St. Edwards Park. We're likely to see a lodge, we may see ball fields, there's going to be a lot of activity there, and that makes me think, gee, maybe that does lend itself to commercial at that corner, because you've got business owners or business investors who would go, you know, that's a, that's a good place for my, whatever it is, small business, because there's activity going on nearby, maybe it's a bike repair shop, maybe it's something compatible with the recreation that's going on at St. Edwards, or the lodging that's going on at St. Edwards, maybe it's another restaurant, maybe it's something that fits into the fastier, natural health movement, I don't know. So that, you know, as I think about that, it kind of leaned toward what you're saying there, too, and preserving, having, preserving a mixed use requirement, but increasing the density. I wonder, though, do we go as far as 24, that would make it more likely that somebody invests, because there's a lot of money to be made with that kind of density? But there is such a thing as too much density. Is that, you know, can we, can we minimize the externalities, the negative externalities that comes with too much density? I'm worried about parking, there's a lot of people talking about parking problems. I mean, I know we have that requirement with any new multifamily construction anyway, but is there likely, is there a risk of some overflow, or? Does anybody address that?
I have to say, I think that, you know, you seem to be kind of going around in a little bit of a circle here, and I don't know if, it seems to me that it's a mixed use requirement which is causing you the most anxiety at the moment, that you feel that if you mandate mixed use, that adding affordable housing would be too much. You seem to be saying that housing would be most attractive in that area, so how about then an approach 1A, which takes out the mandate for mixed use? You still could do a commercial, but it doesn't mandate that you have it in mixed use. So approach one then would be, you would just, you wouldn't mandate mixed use. You could do straight residential, you could do commercial, but the higher density, you would still have the incentive for affordable housing. I'm just trying to put out something there in response to what you've been talking about.
Okay. I'm still kind of stuck on my question. I'm not sure, I'm actually confused by that, not to criticize it, it may be great, I just don't understand it well enough.
So you had asked about the externalities. Again, parking is provided per development.
And it's expected to more than accommodate the number of new units?
The number of new units. So again, in this particular area, from the existing zoning to an increased density of 24 at a maximum, if all parcels redeveloped, it would be like 23 new units. So it's not a huge number. And I have met with the transportation folks upstairs, because we're getting ready to do the environmental review on whatever the final recommendation is, and we're going to have some traffic information prepared, but the general consensus was that this would not be a significant impact, that it's such a small number of potential trips, given the whole system, and also that, that there is, there is capacity available in the system, and the new development would pay traffic impact fees if additional projects had to be added, and if a new development came in, it would be assessed for whether there's safe site access to the transportation network. Given all those things, what they're saying is, it's not a significant impact.
Thanks. I'm kind of leaning toward the increase, it's really proposal number one from the staff, to have a mixed use requirement, and increase the density up to 24 units. Without the, without affordable housing. And, you know, we've all addressed, I just see that, as Commissioner Vanderland wisely pointed out, we can't do it all. I think for our goals in that zone, I think it comes the closest. Did I see a hand up? I know I saw a hand up out there, but we got to wait, I'm afraid.
Yeah, it's okay. Well, would you
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Would you like to formulate a motion?
Well, we actually have a motion on the table, and I don't want to get in the way of that.
Can we, can we hear what that motion is, so we can keep that as our truth?
It was my motion, and it was seconded and was tabled, so I'm not sure of the procedure.
Yeah.
But I'm prepared to take back that motion.
Okay.
I think that the commission has to take it back. I think you lose control once it's been seconded, but I think it's there, I mean, I think the will is there anyway. So we could, somebody could make a motion to rescind the motion, and then we could move forward with a clean slate. But I think we have to address the pending motion.
I move that we rescind the motion that's on the table.
Thank you. Second. Okay. Discussion?
Discussion, I don't recall what it is. Can we refresh our
Oh, yeah, I love talking.
Actually, the staff did us a huge favor by organizing this quite nicely in the memo.
Thank you.
Right. So the motion is, in the South Neighborhood Business Zone, to use eight dwelling units per acre as the base, and incentive to 12 units for mixed use, and to 24 units using the affordability option or a fee in lieu to be used for parks, traffic, and/or affordable housing.
Thank you. So that's the motion. Anything else? Commissioner Mulcair, you're comfortable with that? Clarity?
I am.
Thank you. Discussion? None?
None.
All in favor of rescinding the motion on the table, which is to rescind the previous motion, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Any abstentions? The motion to rescind carries six to zero. All right. Do we hear a motion to address the new zoning for this area? Commissioner Vanderland?
I move that in this south section, we amend the current zoning to allow a density of up to 24 units when combined in a, as a mixed use development.
When combined with mixed use development, okay. And do we need staff, any more discussion or specificity on the ratio of mixed use of the commercial use to the residential use? I think there's something already in the
Right, there's already a code previously that required that you have no more than 50% of your development to be housing, and there was an amendment that increased, in this package, actually, that increased that to 75%. So 75% of your development could be housing.
So you would have up to 24 residential units, and then 25% of the total use of the area would have to be commercial? Would that, that would be the ratio of 25 commercial to 75?
Right.
And is it done on square footage?
Yeah. Yes, I'm finding this section.
Okay. So in accordance with the code?
And that would be the maximum.
Right.
I think there's a square footage maximum, too, but I don't think you'd ever run up against, I think like 50,000 square feet or something like that, if I recall. I don't think it would be relevant for this parcel.
So, I can't remember your name, but I know you've had your hand up, he's really anxious to say something, it's, I'm going to leave, no, 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 I'm going to leave it up to the commission. It's really unusual to, for us to stop and say, oh, there's a hand up, let's take the question, but I'm willing to consider it, partly because there's not a whole lot of people out there, won't be terribly time consuming. But if the majority of the commission wants to entertain the question, I'll call a lot
I would like to ask a clarifying question, and then let him.
Okay.
We keep talking about this as units, but remember, each unit is a duplex.
I don't remember.
Townhouse.
It's
Well, isn't that what it says?
No, that's what they can do now.
No, I just want to make sure the unit we're talking about.
A unit, one townhome would be one unit.
And that townhouse is a duplex.
No, it's not. It's one unit is one unit.
So when they say eight townhome units, they mean that they, at least two would have to join each other, but those would be two units if they did join each other?
That's the clarification I needed, thank you.
Okay. So you're satisfied? You had a question, sir?
Yeah, one question I have is, you go back and forth about the viability.
Could you, would you mind speaking in the microphone, so it records? That'd be helpful.
I saw your concern, you're all worried about whether any kind of code change will achieve the goals you guys want to achieve, and that really is, the best data is the data of the area, not some other data. And I'm familiar with the area apartments, too, and I've seen those units going and leased. A lot is because they're very expensive, and that's before the boom anyways. They said that there, when it was high, now maybe they could rent it, and, you know, maybe kill their business. As far as whether mixed use in our area, probably, I had people come to me and, you know, begging me, you know, that if I have a development they want to lease, from hairdressers to so on. So, so the mixed use, I think, is a good, might be a way to go. The problem, before you guys decided to rezone, there was a very rigid, I think, proportion, 50/50, and I talked
Commercial to residential.
Yeah, and I feel we need some flexibility. Builder has to design a building that really commercially makes sense, and, you know, versus, oh, it had to be 50% residential, 50%. I think maybe with low, you know, high flexibility, it might be hard, but if you give the builder the freedom to do 48, you know, 52, whatever it is, as long as you set some minimums or maximums.
They were saying 25.
Is that like, it has to be 25, 75, or up to? There's a flexibility, as long as he gives you what you want.
Yeah, we can ask.
Yeah, because that, in my view, is, I think, a good approach, if you give the builder some flexibility, versus, there's a percentage, if you don't hit it, we might accept the design and will not allow you to do it.
Yeah.
And I'm happy, I think, with what you guys are trying to do, rezone the, you know, I think affordable housing, another comment about affordable housing, one of you said that we have some area here or something like this.
Over there?
My whole comment about that, we don't want affordable housing to be like a ghetto, one place only. Affordable housing is supposed to be encouraged to have people mix, you know? So therefore, having some affordable housing, the area that I own, might be against my interest, but I think from a social point of view, I think it's a good thing to, to
And you own a parcel in this area on 153rd?
Yeah.
And Juanita?
Yeah.
You own two parcels?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And can I ask?
Yeah, go ahead.
And so you're in favor of mixed use with commercial?
I am. I like what you guys are doing, again, it's the flexibility, when you put numbers, you make it harder for developers to say, well, I want to spend my money, because, you know, even my architect doesn't like what, you know? So I think if you do that percentage with some flexibility, you might find people willing to develop, and I believe we should maintain that. Affordable housing as an incentive, I think, is good, keeps us from having ghettos where affordable housing is one place, and close university is a good thing to have, because there are some students who might live there. So those are my comments, just to help you decide.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For that.
Nice, thank you.
So I like this question, and what is the, how rigid is that requirement for 25 commercial to 75 residential?
So it's a code section that actually is not in the neighborhood business section, and it discusses allowable percentages of residential uses and mixed use, and it does limit the maximum floor area to 50% currently in the neighborhood business zone, and the staff proposal was to increase that to 75%. But once that was set, it would be set. I mean, it's not flexible at that point, so it would be a requirement that you could do up to 75% residential, but still
That's the up to part, that's the part where somebody might have flexibility, which is to say, they could do 50% residential and 50% commercial, but they've got
Correct.
They don't have to pencil it out to the last percentage.
Right.
Okay. Thank you for that. Anything else? So Commissioner Vanderland has put a motion on the table. Do I need a paraphrase?
Yes.
Okay.
Before you do that, I just want to make sure, if you had said that was not currently there, but is it in the proposal somewhere?
Good point.
Yeah, we discussed it in an earlier memo, that that was a staff recommended change.
So this is going to be part of our proposal to the city councils to make that ratio change?
Right.
Okay. In neighborhood business generally, or just this area?
It was specifically neighborhood business, which is now this area. Community, community business, you know, we changed the north area to community business, Juanita sub area, that was already an option.
Okay.
Which is where the idea came to reconsider it for the south area.
The ratio proposal only applies to this area in 153rd and Juanita.
Well, it will apply to both now, because it was already in the community business zone, and we're making it consistent.
Thank you. Great. All right, so I think the motion on the table is to change the zoning to increase density from eight to 24 residential units, provided there be mixed use, according to the ratio that we are proposing for neighborhood business, which is 25, up to 75% of use for residential and 25 for commercial. Sound right? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, discussion further? Yes, Commissioner Baker.
So would this eliminate any affordability, affordable housing incentives as well? It would just be a much simpler approach with no benefits to the city towards affordable housing?
Well, it depends how you look at it. But no, I think what you're, from your perspective, you know, is there a set aside for lower-cost housing units below market? No.
Okay.
And one comment there.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
If you wanted more affordable housing, you'd increase the number of units per acre, and it would automatically have that effect.
And that's what I meant by, depends how you look at it, because that's how I see it, too, by just increasing housing stock and density, the increase in supply helps balance, bring into equilibrium, the market rate for housing generally. Anything else?
So no, no fee in lieu, just to make sure that, no requirement at all? Okay.
So the base is eight, up to 24 if you do mixed use? Was that what I heard?
Isn't this the staff's first proposal, the first of the two recommendations?
Yeah, I think that it was before the, before we had the affordable housing discussion.
Okay. All right, so I think there's been full discussion, we have the motion, it's been seconded, so with that, let's vote on the motion. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, raise your hand and say nay.
Nay.
Okay, any abstentions? There being none, motion appears to carry five to one.
I hope I've been 20 years from now to see how this really plays out.
Staff, is there anything left on this topic for us to discuss tonight?
Uh, no.
Okay.
There's not. So what we would propose is this, your meeting on August 15th, if you choose to cancel it, we would cancel it, we don't have an agenda for that night, and they are going to be doing audiovisual work in here, so we don't actually have the meeting room. Then at the first meeting in September, we would discuss the presentation of this neighborhood business recommendation to the city council, and then at a later meeting in September, probably the day before, because they meet on Monday, it would be the day before your regularly scheduled meeting, I think it's like the 18th, we would try to bring that forward in a joint meeting with the city council. Now, it's possible that the packet for that meeting would have to go out incorporating your recommendation before we actually met on the second, the timing of the council packet, but presumably, you've made your recommendation, and we would be reflecting that, and then you could decide how you want to present it.
All right. Anybody have any questions, comments? Commissioner Baker?
Do we have to formally cancel our meeting for August 15?
That would be good.
Well, I'm
Your motion to cancel next, the August 15 meeting?
I'll make a motion to cancel that meeting.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? There being none, all in favor, vote, raise your hand and vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, raise your hand and say nay.
I'm not reviewing this.
I heard a nay.